Well, entertain people, it's running.
Well, he is a professor and I was trying to think, he had a professor ten minutes before he left.
Fifteen?
Was it fifteen?
It was only ten central.
Yeah, we have the same central. Okay, well, yeah, it is six o'clock and we're all assembled, so I'd like to call in the order if I could. If you all dream me and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all very much. I presume roll has been taken? We've now entertained a motion of the approval of the August twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting minutes. Motion support, any comments or questions, corrections? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that is carried. I neglected the first item up here, we have a couple of changes to our agenda. We have a request to add under item D, number four, request for payment amount fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the PC Trans for the tablet license fees, setup and fee, setup fees, and onsite training for the Elma Transportation Center live tablets. We have under item E, request for purchase in the amount of three thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars to Advanced Controls Incorporated to replace a forty, or a failed forty horsepower variable frequency drive for a return pump at the wastewater treatment plant. And we also have item G, number two, which is consideration of approving a resolution of support for the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks and proclaiming September tenth to sixteen, two thousand eighteen, as National Patriotism Week here in the city of Elma. So those are three additions to the agenda we have tonight. Entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Motion, stay up. Motion support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried, our agenda is amended. Moving on in, communications, we have received a thank you letter from the Mid-Michigan Area Narcotics Group, which is magnet for their, for the annual contribution and our continued support. You read that, that's a letter of thanks, we have to even give them a ten thousand dollar contribution to support their efforts this year, so I think it's a regular, um, something important. Motion support, any additional comments or questions?
Question on the word annual, this is the first time we did it.
No. I think we've done this for a number of years.
We have, well, when we did.
By having a member on.
Right, member.
Yeah, we don't, we no longer have a member on the team, so we made it.
First time we counted.
The contribution.
I'm just wondering if we're locking ourselves into something by using the word annual.
Well, they're, they thanked us for a contribution, they presume it's going to be annual, the request would have to be made and it's regaled on, on an annual basis.
Just so we're not locking ourselves.
I don't believe, I don't believe we have made any commitment for any future payments at all.
No, no contract, nothing, they ask, they come.
And I think if I understand, the officer was really even on a year-to-year basis, was it?
That's correct, yes.
One year at a time, so, okay. Any more comments or questions? I believe we got a motion to support, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, reports are, the thank you letter is received. Moving to C, we have consideration to set a public hearing for Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand eighteen, at six P M. To consider an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Gemini Capital Management LLC for the property located at one eleven and one thirteen West Superior.
I'll have to set the hearing.
Support.
We have a motion support, any comments or questions?
This is Treasurers again, right?
Again, yes, for commonly known as the Treasurers' Building. So hearing nothing, all those in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Moving down to consent agenda, commissioners may approve all of the following items by one resolution, or a commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. And there are now, I believe, four items with the addition that we made, so. First one is request for payment amount six thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents to Frontier Communications for the annual maintenance agreement charge for the city's phone system. Second is request for payment amount of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents to the Bank of New York Mellon for the principal and interest due on the Michigan Financial Authority S R F and S W Q F loans. Third item is request for payment amount of eleven thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and six cents to the state of Michigan for the principal and interest due on the Brownfield redevelopment loan, two thousand four dash ten twenty-five, number four three zero eight zero nine. And then the fourth item was request for payment amount of fifteen nine fifty to the PC Trans for the tablet license fees, setup fees, and onsite training for the Elma Transportation Center live tablets. What is your pleasure?
Support.
We have a motion support, are there any comments or questions on any of these items? Would you like to pull anything? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Moving to E, request for purchase, first up, we have request for purchase in amount of fifteen thousand six hundred, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents to U.S. Ecology for the removal and disposal of three transformers and related hazardous material from wellhouse two A and the removal and disposal of two transformers currently in storage, related oil and potentially hazardous soil and concrete involved in that. I guess those two items, two transformers. Again, your pleasure? We have a motion support, are there any comments or questions? I, I guess I had one, the, the two transformers in storage, are those out of the garage?
No, the, we disposed of the ones at the garage several years ago, these are two over at the water plant.
Okay, and they're just old ones we had sitting there?
Yes, they may do have P C Ds in them.
Okay. Well, good to see them gone, that's a good idea before the problem becomes worse, so.
The ones, we may have a, a couple more in the wastewater treatment, but they're up on poles and, and it's just cause we're, you're doing it with the power, they're still working okay.
Oh, they're, they're functioning now?
Yes, we have a couple, no, no, the two there at water plant are.
Are not functioning.
Yes, we do have, we may have two or three more that are actually in our wastewater system, but they're up on poles at the list.
Okay, but we're not using them.
Seven issues. One's, three at the wellhouse, two at the water plant, we're going to dispose of those.
Okay.
We do have potentially two or three more, we don't know yet, that are up on poles, are in use at our list station.
Okay. Right, so we're getting everything that's not in use right now. Okay, that's quite a, for me, thank you very much for getting it through to me, I appreciate that. Okay, and I believe, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we had a motion support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried as well. Moving to two, request for purchase amount of two thousand five hundred ninety dollars to Mercino, I guess this is Mercino, for a wellpoint head pipe, under pipe system for de-watering projects, which will be performed by the Public Works Department. Your pleasure.
What are de-watering projects, I'm just curious.
That would be a question for.
What are de-watering projects?
Okay, and so that there, a unique feature in this area is that we do have some areas that have sand and there's water in the sand, that means when you start digging a hole, it's not, the sand starts caving in faster than you can actually dig it. And so one of the ways you can actually help yourself to do a repair is to put in these, uh, there are pipes with perforations with holes in them, and you just start sucking on them with a pump, and you draw the water off, and you can draw the water table around and then pull it down, so then you actually get dry sand that you can do a better job of, of excavation. A lot of our lines, we found out once later that they're about eighteen feet deep because they're, they're at the end of the, all these century sewer lines have to go to the low point, and then they go through the list station, get pumped up and away. So the, the length of the line, we can determine what your slope is, and there's some areas in town which are very, very deep, like in Virginia had very deep, or Slater has very deep. And we know that if you go back and start getting, we don't have anything right now ourselves, and so it's like, well, this is a good idea to get this equipment so that when we do, over on Michigan Avenue, uh, last week we had a storm large survey. And so then we had to go down there and then we had the same thing as the large sand. So we, we went to, uh, Ed Ward, and he helped us out by doing it. But we, this will help us do it ourselves at a cheaper cost, once we have the equipment.
Sure.
And then we can plan the things and then go back and tap it. Because we keep coming up time after time.
We've had a pretty high percentage of when we have something, that we, we have this need.
Pretty good way to do water here.
Yes.
Support, motion to support, okay. And I presume this is a safety issue too with these wells, you're sending people down in these holes that it's less likely to collapse on them and makes it safer for everybody too, which is a great thing.
As long as it's a plant, just like, hey, we got a problem, let it de-water for a few days and then we'll go back and tap it. No.
Okay, we did have a motion to support, any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Moving to three, request for purchase amount of six thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty cents to Saint Regis Culvert Incorporated for underbody blades for the Public Works Plow Trucks.
Move approval, it's coming.
I had a motion, I'm not sure you're going to be. Okay, we know who likes the snow.
Support, I say no snow.
We had a motion to support, are there any questions or comments on the beds? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item four is request for purchase amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to Atna Supply to purchase second-hand, second-hand, hand. It's a second-hand computer, to re-water me here, boy, that's a tough one for me. A second handheld computer, so it's not a second-hand computer.
No.
It's a second handheld computer, okay.
So we're buying new equipment.
Second piece of new equipment, I got it.
Punctuation is key there.
Yes.
It often is.
Hey, your pleasure, others are making fun of me.
Move approval, but we really stayed a long time.
Nick knows me too well, he knows this could get.
Support.
We have a motion to support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. And, whoops, number five, you're right, thank you. We had the final request for purchase amount of three thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars to Advanced Controls Incorporated to replace a failed forty horsepower variable frequency drive for a return pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
Support.
Hearing motion support, I assume everybody thinks this is a good idea? Any comments or questions?
That's a really good deal on that, because we used, pay a lot more for that than, for the frequency drive we had at where I work. They were like three times the horsepower, and they were in the thirty and forty thousand dollar range.
I like three thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars.
Yeah, so this is actually pretty cheap compared to some of those.
So thank you, yes, it just failed this morning, and we went through diagnostics, it failed, it was part of our C I T, was going to be replaced sometime this year, we just weren't going to do it until we had a problem with it, but since it failed this morning, glad to get it approved today and then we'll have it this week.
So this is off the shelf, and this isn't anything that's, you know, sometimes you run into equipment that you have a long lead time to get, so. Glad to hear that's not part of this process. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Thank you for your reminder. Okay. Moving down to G, resolutions, first up, we have consideration of a resolution exempting the city of Elma from the requirement of P A one fifty-two of two thousand eleven for the calendar year two thousand nineteen. Our note here indicates that on two, nine twenty-seven of two thousand eleven, the Public Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, P A one fifty-two, became effective, which requires public employee, employers either to contribute less than the hard cap towards the medical benefit plan, or employees contribute at least twenty percent of the cost of the medical plan. The city contributes considerably less than the hard cap and is in compliance with the law and able to exempt itself from the requirement of P A one fifty-two for the calendar year in two thousand nineteen. And I believe we've done this for a number of years now, so. Entertain a motion?
Some.
Or, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Moving to resolution number two, we have a consideration of resolution approving a resolution of support to the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks in proclaiming September tenth through sixteen, two thousand eighteen, as National Patriotism Week in the city of Elma. Motion support, motion support, any comments or questions? Just, I have to say, thank, good thank you, good things to the Elks and we thank for all they do, do for the community, so. And that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Moving down to agreements, first up, we have consideration of a resolution approving change order number one to increase the payment to fall zone safety surfacing for three days of additional drain and subbase work in the amount of eight thousand five hundred for the rebuild Wright Dream Park Ported Place project.
Move approval.
We have a motion to support, any comments or questions? Do you mind giving us the words to say?
Yeah, I think we did discuss this in the, in the work session also, and I think that, um, we know that the, uh, weather situation over the last few weeks, especially in trying to finish off the park, has been more than challenging. Um, staff, uh, public work staff did an amazing job, frankly, to get out in the, the heavy, heavy rains to get these drains taken care of. Uh, in, in a sense, we're, we're fortunate to find this out now, um, with the heavy rains, otherwise, a few years down the road, we may have been sitting with a bunch of water that had been sitting under there, that would have done some damage to the park, so. Um, I think this is something, it was reasonable that the company stepped into to help dig trenches and stuff inside the, the zone, um, that got us there, to get the, the water out of there, hopefully will, will keep us dry underneath that surface. So, our next step will be to open it, and hopefully that will happen here pretty soon. We're going to go check this and looking at it tomorrow and see how dry it is around the outside now for the park itself.
And you'll be working with the committee to make that determination as to when they're.
What they're ready to do there.
Because they actually schedule all that, correct?
Yep.
Be on their timelines, okay. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Okay, moving to reports, commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or a commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. We have five reports today, one from the Elma Transportation Center, August two thousand eighteen, a building permit, August two thousand eighteen report, planning commission meeting minutes of August sixth, two thousand eighteen, the code enforcement report for August two thousand eighteen, and the medical marijuana facilities task for, task force report of September fourth, two thousand eighteen. Your pleasure.
Move to receive.
Support.
We have a motion support, are there anybody want to comment or, or questions about anything? Would you like to give us a verbal report? And give you. To have, and a verbal update, yes.
A verbal update, it's the smoke spot before this. On September fourth, did not meet this Tuesday, although we do have weekly meetings scheduled, the folks, some folks just weren't available. Number of things were discussed, so just to, to bring people up, up to speed, and I actually have a copy of my notes for, for members of the press that are here too, so. Uh, first, we were, we have been in the process of reviewing other ordinance, we've looked at ordinances from state, from eight different local municipalities in Michigan to see, to get ideas about what they're including and how we might design something for ease of reading and following. Because of the potential complexity of the process, we considered, we started to talk in depth about the timing of when these things happen and the sequencing of when things are supposed to be. And to get more, to get approvals. For example, part of an overall, overall permit submission applicants are going to at least be expected to prepare a business plan, address any zoning issues or questions, a building plan that addresses any necessary upgrades or improvements to mechanical, electrical, plumbing in their facility, a security plan, a waste disposal plan, and there are some other ones out there that other municipalities are looking at. So that's the kind of thing, there's a lot of moving parts when you put something like this together. We also want to find the simplest way to collect relevant information from the state of Michigan for the local application. There is some overlap in what we need, we don't want to duplicate that effort for the applicant or the city, there's a cost involved and there's time involved, so we want to look to simplify that process as much as we can. Uh, we also talked about the order in which applications will be reviewed. Uh, we, there's a lot of different ways, you can collect them all and look at it, pick the best one, you can draw cards, draw, draw, do a random drawing of those, once they're all collected. Uh, but we looked, talked in depth about a first application received, first one reviewed process, so first, first come, first served, if you will, to, to look at that, we seen, that seemed about the cleanest, but we'll, we'll continue those discussions. Uh, we also talked about how does one go about levying application fees, and there are a number of different ideas out there from different municipalities. Uh, some is when someone comes in and collects their, their application, has an intent to apply, there can be a fee for processing that, that comes out of the application fee. When, when the application is complete, the remainder of the fee is turned in, that's, that's one way to do it that allows us to do the work, cover the cost to them, bring them here to work. Another is you just get it all upfront, or you get it all when, when the app, when the application's complete. So we're really starting to discuss what are some of our options, how might they, they play out. We looked at the usefulness of a preliminary application questionnaire, and that would be something that would, along the applicant would then review their facility location, verify that they're going to be within zoning, because if three or four people have their eye on the same facility, only one person gets to do it, so we need, we don't want to waste people's time, so that preliminary application actually can be something upfront with, that we think saves everyone involved some time and energy. And then what we want to do, once, once we're done with this thing and as it unfolds and gets more complete, we try to put together a kind of flow chart or checklist that will help our folks that are going through it as well as the applicant, to say, this is where I am in the process. So we will continue our work, begin to look at, at these policies, but also start to look at the various pieces where folks will need to get approval from, from departments in the city and get some detail on that. So that's, that's what we're doing, we're making progress, and, uh, any questions? Do you have, the commissioners have any questions?
I appreciate your work and the fact that you're trying to make it simple for both staff and the public, as well as, you know, getting the best practices of other units that have gone through the process.
It's complex.
Yes. So, your work is appreciated. Okay. Uh, did we not receive those reports, I think we had a motion and support?
Yeah.
Have we given you?
Yeah. We just didn't get the vote.
Oh, okay, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, reports have been received. Okay, next up is appropriations. We have a motion to support, any comments or questions on the list of appropriations? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, it's carried. Commissioner comments? Um, Roxanne, go first.
Well, just exciting to see them going on downtown. It's nice to go through town, see old sides of the road with cars parked, and, uh, just appreciate all the people and what they've done, the volunteers, and all the activities that are going on. Really, uh, makes you feel good.
Just to expound on that a little bit, Lucky Mac Duck did take place this past weekend, for all intents and purposes, it was a huge success. We were not able to go in the water, the water was just too fast to put human beings in there and have them get washed downstream and have to paddle them out in St. Louis. Um, so rather than doing that, we did just a drawing, which is the, the way the lottery commission says, we can do that if we can't get in the water. Anne Rose White won the one thousand dollar first prize and donated it back to.
Well, that explains why my phone didn't ring yet.
That's why your phone, we did have more than a hundred regular prizes, some with as much value as a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, uh, which were very well received. Um, the preliminary numbers, I got a message from Mama Duck yesterday, thanking everybody. But the preliminary numbers are that someplace in between seven and nine thousand dollars into the coffers of Pine River Arts Council. All of that money stays local, it's all, that's why we try to use local talent, local vendors and everything else for it, because it's a local community fund day, and that money all stays here and goes to, um, Gratchett County, art projects that people are looking for help with, uh, the banners downtown, the Panthers downtown, the quilt project, um, when the high school band asks for money to help them go to, um, Chicago or New York, or the forensics team wants to put on a, a, a meet or something like that, they very often ask for help. The, the youth workshop that the kids put on at the theater are all supported by grants from Pine River Arts Council, so. Very, very worthwhile, and very, very happy with it.
Thank you and them for their, for your big work. Hey, good time.
Oh, got some other, happy birthday nap?
Thank you.
Had to put that on the bar.
Thank you, very much.
Get this on the record.
Not that big of a deal.
Another happy birthday.
It's your first one to sit here, first one to city manager.
Yeah.
There you go, yes, this is momentous, here I am. No, Mark, you good?
I had a, an odd call earlier this week, and Mark, you can probably step in on this, but if you get a call and they're telling you that the IRS is coming to give you a rest in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Wow, I got one too.
I, I'm still here, uh, but, but I think just be aware, when you get these odd things, I think the, the police, the, the people to call are the, are the police.
I got one too, and called the camera just to make sure that really wasn't a horn out for me, she laughed. I told her, I said, I know it's scam, but I said, I didn't know if you wanted the numbers they left.
But I, I guess the, the message is, if something doesn't sound right, it probably isn't. And it's a good thing to work with local law enforcement, they're going to have a handle on this whole thing. And I've dealt with other people who can get confused by that and end up really, really upset, so, just pay attention.
Yes, and not just, they get upset they get swindled.
They do get swindled, yeah.
Yeah, generally, I mean, that's great advice, if it sounds too good to be true, it generally is. If somebody's asking you to send money to them so that you can collect money, ninety-nine out of a hundred is going to be a scam, or even a hundred out of a hundred, there's all kinds of things out there that people need to avoid, and particularly our, our, uh, experienced population becomes targets of.
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable, yes.
We are.
We are, okay.
Yeah, apparently we don't close enough to that.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for the words, that's. Madam Clark?
Just September eleventh, kind of gets you thinking about, uh, first responders, police and fire, and. Thank you guys very much, um, just goes to show you, we need to do those jobs, we put your life on the line. It's not every day, but everybody that takes that responsibility on is doing that, thank you very much. And it also reminds us, I guess, that we're, number one, we're all Americans. You may not believe the same things all the time, but first and foremost, we're all Americans, and that's a good thing as a number two.
The, probably the biggest thing that, that, I'd say, we started this week our, our performance, our perform Elma training, um, which I tell you, there's another one tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at the library, for anyone in the commission who may be available, or no. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night was six o'clock at the library, uh, having a night crew in, um, to go through it, and then next Monday would be another eight o'clock, um, that I definitely invite you folks to, to see. Um, if you remember, we basically set two goals for ourselves during this year, and that first goal was to really work on the employee, develop the employee engagement. Um, this is a big part of that, um, of taking the, the triple process that we put up there, it's really the first exposure that the entire staff is going to have to that, we spend a good, a significant portion of time of going through those principles that are going to become our core values, um, as we work here in the city. The good thing too is this is, starts to hit on that second goal that we have, um, for this upcoming year, which was really to the community engagement, to get our, our, our employees back with our community and, and working with them on things, I think we've seen some good things already starting to happen. I would tell you after the first session, I'm, I'm very, very happy to see the response of folks, sometimes you do something like that, you're not sure if you're reaching people, um, what's going on, but they, they are going to identify, they are going to identify with those six core values, and I think I made that clear by the time we got done, that this is the direction we're going. But more importantly, we're putting a process in place through this that's going to really lay out some expectations for our employees and for our supervisors, and how we work together. I think we've done a good job at the administrative level of us meeting and talking and getting to know each other over time, even though a lot of us have worked together here for a very long time. Now, we're going to try to take that to the next step, to make those administrative meetings, um, more topic oriented and, and really things where we can start to direct the focus that we feel is necessary for the city, so. Uh, if you're available one of those two days, I would love to have you there, because I think it's part of the process that I need to be held accountable to also, is the same thing that we're going to go down the line with, so. Hopefully, we'll continue, we're going to get these out into all the, the other satellite places, and the Public Works Department, library, and water transit, and all those places, we're going to have it up, and publish this so that people understand, this is how we function here. So, I'll be honest, I, and I told everybody the other night, um, I've been a little hesitant. So I'll be honest, and I told everybody the other night, I've been a little hesitant to go to the next step where you actually started planning this one thing, implementing the whole other. But I think we're ready, and I think we're ready to make that next step and to make this how we operate here. Thank you for your support in where we're trying to go.
Thank you, Matt. Speaking for the board, I know we're all looking forward to holding you accountable, so. It should be good. But the only thing I would disagree with what you said is, I think from what I've experienced and observed, I don't think they're going, that the staff is going to embrace those six values. I think by and large, they already do. I think, you know, we've got a great team and you can be very proud of everybody that works at City Hall and all the various branches, departments. I have no trouble believing that they're going to achieve great things going forward and everybody's pulling together. It's just going to be really neat. Larry's indicating, we did have a flyer. There is apparently a used book sale happening again this year at the First Presbyterian Church on West Superior. It's Tuesday, September 18th, 19th, 20th and 21th. And I don't know if you can zoom in on that, Lynn?
Absolutely.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, well, we can thank Mr. Mott for bringing that to our attention. Or Roxanne.
Team effort.
But I would like to echo everything everybody else said, you know, great things going on downtown. A fun place to be, it's the place to be today, I think, in downtown Elma. There's a lot of fun stuff going on, a lot of good food to be eaten. Join everybody in welcoming the main cafe back online. I was able to have lunch there the other day and enjoyed it very much, look forward to going back again. I've seen many, many people going in and out of there and I'm sure they're going to continue to do well on the other restaurants that we have. Had the honor to go to the bike race the other day, last Saturday. The Elma...
The cyclocross.
The cyclocross, right? And that was actually my first time there. I found it fascinating, the course they have and the way they do things is really cool. And I would encourage everybody, you know, it's too late this year, but next year, go out and check it out because it is really neat.
My son-in-law has gotten very into that and just loves it.
And competitors literally all over the world. I mean, this is a...
Ruben and Alma, yes, they're here.
And we, you know, and I had no idea that, how cool it was.
It's set up really well for spectators.
Oh, yeah.
We need to really promote that to get folks out there to see it. It's, I did post something on our Facebook page to give you that overhead view. You don't even know where you're at, you're looking at it from up there, it's pretty incredible.
And they've got some drone pictures. I had to put it up on where their website is. So there's some neat footage of that.
So is that a big mud patch that they're dragging their bikes through? I saw...
They have a sand.
Sand, okay.
But it's not, it wasn't, I was expecting mud too, but it really isn't. I mean, there's obviously mud, but as they get going there...
I saw some people look like they were trying to ride it through and then you see them just dragging bikes across.
I imagine as the day wears on, the grass and everything goes away, you do get mud, more mud, but it's pretty cool.
Not easy.
Tense one.
No, not at all easy, no. I was exhausted just watching.
And they were very good guests as well. You would not know that they were there today.
Well, absolutely, and I guess, now I'm glad you mentioned it because I was amazed at the number of people that came up and mentioned what a great time they had, how much they liked Elma, how much they enjoyed the hospitality that they found. You know, because they were all downtown the night before and probably that night again, enjoying the local flavors. So it was good for everybody, it was really neat and a good group, a nice group to have in town. Also went and visited the Lucky Duck event and that was well attended, nice to see everybody there. A lot of hard work goes into that, so it's appreciated. I see they're painting the strands, so lots going on around here and everywhere. With that, we'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to comment, please go to the podium and state your name and address and let us know your thoughts. Who would like to be first?
I'm Jenny Kim, I'm from 209 Gulfside Drive. My husband passed away six years ago. And I would like your health. I don't use your water, I have my own well. And I don't like paying $69.98 a month for something I'm not using. I'm 87. I would put a bid for sale sign on my house, but when I pass away, it's being left to our daughter. And that's what I, I'm here, I appreciate Mr. Schoolly and Sheila every time I come in to beg. I say, I don't like paying this bill, I don't mind paying bills, but I don't like paying this much for something, I'm not kidding. So I'm just asking for your help, please.
I would tell you, Jenny comes in and...
I'm in the to come more than I'm at home with our son. I stay a lot with my son, more than I do in Elma. And that's what I say, I don't want to sell it because it's being left to our daughter.
Okay, I think we'll have to, it'll work some investigation as to what can be done, what the potential options may be, if there's any. I don't, at this point, no, I don't have an answer for you today. I don't believe anybody in the commission does or staff does at this point. We are currently working on some water issues, so perhaps we can roll this into the process.
Right now, we're at the minimum. I mean, it's, it's...
I don't hear well, huh?
Jenny, it's like I've explained to you, it's at the minimum, we're at that minimum level. And that's charged whether you are using or not. I mean, there's other services that go in there, but we need to look at it.
I'll bet maybe some of the families on Gulfside that use your water pay this much or even less. I'm just saying, I don't mind paying something, but $70 a month is a lot of money for me. Let alone my taxes, I'm not going to complain about that. That's three months of my social security check goes to the city for tax. So I'm just asking for help for this. I don't mind, if I was using it, I wouldn't care, but I don't, I have my well and I've had it. We built our home in 1960.
Thank you very much.
So you let me know.
That will get with you. Thank you.
Can I go now?
You are free to go.
4:30 in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who would like to be next?
God bless you.
My name is Lori Wilson, I'm on 517, 517 Michigan Avenue. Friend of mine that lives on 517 East Hill Crest, their, middle of their road has a big pahoel about that big in front of their home. And every time people drive down there, it bothers out their car or their vehicle. And I'm asking if you guys could do something about it or patch up the hole because it's about that big. And I noticed it today when I went over and I thought maybe I could help my friend with this situation. And another thing I'm asking, thank you for all the support and all the love that you guys and all Elma and St. Louis has helped me get through what I've been through since May. I'm, I've done so good in treatments that I've had since May. And all the love and all the prayers. I am starting on my next treatment of chemo. And I found out the other day that for my doctor that did the surgery, she thinks that I don't have cancer anymore, but she says on the safe side, I'm doing the treatments to prevent it coming back. And with everybody's love and support, I want to thank you, everyone, including the Elma PD and everyone. Because if it wasn't for everybody here and Elma and St. Louis, I don't know what I would have done. I'm 56 years old and I've seen a lot of love since May. And my next treatments are coming up the 19th. And I'm kind of a little weary because the treatment I'm going to have might make me ill, but I can't think negative, I have to think positive. And I've got a great team of doctors and friends that's willing to help me. And I want to say thank you all for all the prayers and all the support that I can give. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Laurie, and glad you got some good news there. Sounds like the best advice you can get is follow your doctor's orders.
Well, I try, but sometimes it just drags me down. But I've got a lot of support from my church that, and a lot of people that say, don't think negative because if you think negative, it's going to put you down.
Absolutely. And it sounds like you got some really good news there too, so that's good.
Well, yeah, I'm kind of stunned a little bit, but they're telling me I have to go through these to, to prevent it coming back.
Sure.
And I've struggled so much. And I think about my mom and my grandma, but they're down, they're looking up from up heaven down here on me. And I just feel like I'm strong, I'm powerful, I can stand with my head held high and do what I have to. And everybody, thank you for all the prayers and thank you for the support.
Stay strong, yes. Well, last but not least, Mr. Roseanne.
Sure.
I think you're next, aren't you?
Last one's Nancy, 889 Mill Street. I just want to kind of second what's going on downtown. I'm going to focus on how fortunate we are in Elma to have live theater that we have, that takes place with the Gratchit Players. We went to the culmination of the summer workshop. I think there was like 40, I think about 40 kids, I think, involved with that play. The theater group has taken quite an undertaking to get children exposed and interested in fine arts. And it shows up in what I saw this last weekend, it's called 13 Musical. I think the oldest, the oldest participant was 19. I know, I know one of the fathers of the guy that played arch, the kid just turned 12 in June. And he played somebody with muscular dystrophy and he, I mean, I was amazed. I'm amazed, every show I go to, I still say I saw Patsy Cline once and she was right here in Elma. I went home that night and I put on the music and I said, you tell me the difference. I cannot tell. But anyway, when people talk about the importance of the fine arts in the community through the schools, through something like this, I mean, stand up and say, I'm telling you, this is a lifelong experience that people can take through their entire lives. I played in two community bands, I've played an instrument since a long time ago. And I played in two community bands. I can't play football, I can't run track, I couldn't run track that well in high school, but I certainly couldn't do it now. And these are things that adults can do and there's all, I just, I'm amazed. Every time I go into that theater, we, we sell tickets and I've played in two of the pit orchestras and I do sell tickets. So we are in and around. And on the surface, people look at it, I don't think they realize how many layers of things have to come together to put something like that on. This play here, this last weekend, they did mostly rehearsing in the Methodist church, correct? Because they had this other thing going on, the summer workshop. So it's just phenomenal that we have that here in Elma and it's really a great positive thing. Secondly, that meeting with the Gratchit, the healthy private, is Thursday night. Dr. Ken Keaton will be there as well. So they have, Murray Barlow and Tim Keaton will be presenting the results of the testing of the river over the last summer. Hope you can all vote. Thank you.
And I'm being there. So I misspoke, I said last, I, you do have a member of the public, if you'd like to speak. I didn't mean to exclude yourself, I apologize for that. You're free to come to the podium and...
I'm good, thank you.
No? Okay. Well, I believe everybody's talked, then, the staff has anything that they had, or the press? Hearing none? Which goal was that?
Oh, one more thing, real quick. Since it's Matt's birthday, could you guys buy him a regular, not tape over, name tag?
I don't know what the cost of tape is less.
Yeah, we can do it for that, I still have the paper.
We went, we went, we went blind for a while. And so they finally did get you the...
Well, we're not sure we're going to keep him.
But he's off-center. I mean, he's not center.
But we like him that way.
He is a little off-center.
Okay, we'll enter the motion to adjourn. Matt, you may, thanks, just go home and celebrate your birthday.
So will I.
Probably has a cupcake. Okay, we have motion support, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you very much and have a great evening.